Okay, we'll now call the fourth meeting of Corporate Services to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the March 5, 2007 minutes moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Do I have any questions or changes to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried, thank you. First report on the agenda is F. 2007-13 dealing with the annual statement of remuneration and expenses. There is a recommendation there for council that it's for information. Do I have any council that wishes to speak on it? Counselor Thompson, please.
Yes, I'm particularly surprised to see the remuneration for the council and specifically the mayor. I have a question through you to Mr. Burden. Mr. Burden, has this been an annual increase in the salary for the mayor over the last three years?
Through the chair, the council members and the council mayor's salary is tied respectively to the QP agreement for the annual increases.
Well, thank you for that. I recall like it was yesterday, sitting in the 2003 election at the Cogeco debate on television when the question was asked, and I believe it was asked by Mr. Locke, is that right, Mr. Locke, about salary? You got amnesia, that's okay. Anyway, the question was asked, will you take a salary increase? My response was, I've seen too many years where council or the mayor does not take a salary increase, and then all of a sudden, five years later, you want 35 percent increase. And we established a formula where it would be tied to the increase that the union staff gets, and that was exactly my response at the time. And at the time, when Mr. Salsi was asked, what he would do, said he would never take a salary increase during the term of office. And now here we see that it's an annual increase. You know, I heard enough about honesty and accountability and everything else. I think that this is certainly a statement that he has made that is untrue, and I would expect that he would return the money. If he said he wasn't going to take it, turn it back in. Also, what about the region? Has there also been an increase at the regional level? Let's stand up for accountability, honesty. Let's go and talk with the Committee for Honesty. That should be a good response. This is very upsetting, and I don't think that the public should stand by and let this happen.
Okay, I appreciate your comments, but we're dealing with the recommendation on the report that this report is for the information of council. Do I have any other council members that wish to make comment? Counselor Diodati, please.
This is...
Inspire all you want, but give the money back.
Orders, please.
No, we're talking just in the report in general. One comment that I had was in regard, and it's a question actually to our finance department, to you, Mr. Chair. Why is it that the Niagara Falls Hydro Board, we don't really have the council members listed? I don't understand. This, I believe, came up last time, too. I'm wondering why they're not automatically, everybody that receives compensation, isn't listed.
Sure. Perhaps I could have Mr. Burden answer that.
Through the chair, could I have the question repeated, please?
Sure. Counselor Diodati is wondering why the other members of the Niagara Falls Hydro Board are not listed here? Those would be the members that were appointed by council, not the council members themselves.
Through the chair, last year, we were specifically asked to provide this information for the council members, and we were simply following that request.
I think with Counselor Diodati, okay.
Through the chair, there's no requirement that we list what the council members make on the Niagara Falls Hydro. It's as per the municipal act as they make on the other committees. Niagara Falls Hydro is a private entity. However, last year, when this report came forward, the council members said to give the full picture, we want to see what the remuneration is for Hydro as well. So there's no requirement to, as part of this report, as per the municipal act, to give out the amounts to the private citizens, but we could.
Well, then I would make that motion through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, we do for every other committee, why not Hydro? I don't understand. I mean, it's public money, and there are people within the community. I think it should all be open.
So you'd like to make the motion that the salaries of the other members of the Hydro Board be brought forward to a report of council?
Yeah, actually, and if there's anyone else that overlooked any other committees, I think all money that we're paying out for boards and committees, I think should be public information published yearly.
Would you like to also include in your recommendation that we receive the report for information?
That's a great idea.
Do I have a second to that? Mayor Salsi. Do I have any other comments or questions to the report that's in front of us? Counselor May, please.
Yes, I have one question, really. On the Hydro Board and some of the other boards that were mentioned a couple of sessions ago, it was voted on, that no one received remuneration on any of these boards. Is that going to be correct? Are these going to be zeros for councils next year?
Should be. Yes, it should be.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Fisher is opposed. So noted. Next report is F. 2007-14 dealing with the cancellation reduction of refund of taxes. Looking for the recommendation to be approved by Counselor Diodati, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Any questions, comments, or conflicts?
Yeah, I see there's some adjustment here by a couple of my companies. There are zero adjustments, but I don't know why they're there, but I'm going to declare conflict.
Absolutely. Conflict, so noted. There is a motion on the floor for approval. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried, thank you. Next one is H.R. 2007-02 dealing with the collections officer position. Mayor Salsi, move the recommendation, seconded by Counselor Ayanone. Any questions or comments? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, is this a through, Mr. Chair, is this a city position, or is this tied with the Hydro?
Through the chair, this is a city position. They're a water collections department.
So how does that work with the city Hydro?
Through the chair, I'm glad that our manager of finances here, Todd Harrison, I think it would be better addressed to Todd if he could stand up and answer that question.
Sure. Mr. Harrison.
The position that we were talking about is the city position. That is the major liaison with the Niagara Falls Hydro in relation to any collection issues that occur. Niagara Falls Hydro does billing and the collections. They have a requirement legislatively that they do not carry a receivable for unpaid water bills. And so, as a result, we have a process which we discussed previously in a previous meeting in regards to transferring the taxes. So this person handles a large portion of that. The other thing that they do is they handle water concerns, water complaints, because Hydro staff do not handle those things. If there's a billing issue, generally, they fall to the city because the city is the, it is our resource, even though Hydro does provide a service for us.
This is just sewer and water?
Sewer and water, and also assists in our tax collection, as we've said. It's been very beneficial.
So there is a recommendation on the floor for approval. All those in favor? Those motions carried. Under our 2007 budget, I'll turn it over to Mr. McDonald, who will be giving us the big picture, and council members will take hold of the 2007 budget plans that they have here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The small pictures are harder to see as we get older, and that's why I'm going to go to the big picture. What we want to do, as you know, starting in two weeks from now, we're going to get into the real details of the budget, and as council requested, we're going to be dealing with specifics of each department, and we're just formalizing those presentations. What we want to do right now is just get counsel a flavor of how the budget is coming together, and we would welcome any suggestions or recommendations from council in terms of how we might refine this, or areas you really want us to focus in on over the next several weeks. But like I said, the real details you'll be getting into when you get the full package beginning in two weeks. Anyway, so the first item here is just really reminding council, based on past directions we've received, how we began putting the budget together. And we're making assumptions, as we have in the past, that current service levels will be maintained, we have no direction otherwise, that increases for utility costs and general inflation would be included and added on to last year's budget, and that in addition to those items, any other specific items that council may have approved over the past year, that's added on as well, because it would have been in addition to the '06 The quick summary page, I guess, is this. As we're looking at it right now, we're showing revenues of 79, 841, and we're showing expenses of 81, 273, which really puts us at a deficit at this point in our proposed budget of approximately $1.4 million. And when we look at that in relation to the levy, and as we've talked in the past, levy is really what comes out of the pocket, as opposed to getting into tax rates versus assessments, the levy is what person paid and what that increased percent would be on the person on their levy. So right now, the deficit is approximately 3.5 percent. So to give you a little more details on that, on the expense side, and I would suggest the expense side is kind of a good news kind of focus, because you'll see on the bottom here, the difference between '06 and '07 on expenses is only $73,800. Part of that is due to two main areas. One, four lines down on contracted services, you'll see a decrease of approximately $1.5 million. And then further down on transfers to capital, you see a decrease of about $1.9 million. And there's significant reductions on the expense side, partially due to the fact that we had other help over the past year and other sources of money from other government sources that we were able to utilize. And that's been reduced, which overall increased or decreased our expenses. But the fact is, within here, you have utility increases, and you have the cost, additional costs for labor, and as you'll recall, we're into the last year of a third-year deal with our QP agreement, which was 3.25 percent. We have an allocation for fire services, but we're currently on the way to arbitration to resolve the fire services issue. So that's the expense side, and we think there's been a fair bit of work done on that, and we're in pretty good shape in that regard. The next slide just gives you an idea, this transfer to capital that I mentioned, that's a significant line item in the operating budget, in that when we get into the detail on the capital budget, we either pay cash for it from our operating budget, which is what this is, or you debenture it. And it's significant to note that in '06, we transferred over $7 million, and this year, at this point, we're recommending approximately $5 million. So that has an implication down the road. If we're not paying for it from our operating budget, and you want to maintain the same level of capital work, then we'll be into debenturing, and we'll show you a little bit about that right now. The annual debt payments, you'll see from '06, we have a bit of a spike that went from approximately $2 million that we were spending to cover our principal and interest costs on our debt, up to approximately $4 million. And as you know, that's due to really two main issues, and that's due to the debenturing for the new community center and the significant additional contributions we've made relative to infrastructure. They're the two key kind of areas that we will get into at the appropriate time. If you wanted to go back and look at those details, we can provide you that information. Going forward on the red line is really a plan. We haven't committed to those yet, but based on the capital budget, the five-year capital budget from last year, that's how the chart would continue if, in fact, you were agreed to spend the money that we've been talking about. And again, there's some significant monies in there, including the arena complex, and of course, the other balances in the public works end in terms of some of the proposed works that are in that area. So it's quite significant, and when we get into the capital budget, that's when you'll decide if you like the direction of this line or you don't, and it will be up to you to decide where it should go. Mr. Chair, I think. Alvin Ayanone, Counselor Ayanone.
Counselor Ayanone.
On this red line, is the Morris Street overpass on there?
Yes, it is.
Counselor Diodati, please.
And with the red line, we mentioned the arena. Are we looking, does this take in a four or a two bat in this line?
At this point, it takes in a twin pat, but in April, we'll be discussing the four pat.
Counselor Ayanone.
Does this red line include the remediation costs for the arena property? Because we are borrowing 1.3.
Yes, yeah, it includes the site preparation works as well. That's correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. Couple more questions. Counselor Carrio, please.
On the red line, John, this includes the principal payments as well, and are they all based on the same amortization or are they different?
Yeah, they're not all exactly the same. Over the last couple of years, we've gone into particularly major facilities, we've gone into 20-year debenturing. In the past, we would do 10. So it depends on the life of the investment. So we're really tending to go to longer-term terms, 20-year terms instead of 10, so.
Counselor Thompson, please.
Does that include the, any monies for the downtown?
Yes, it does. It includes the $12 million for the downtown.
Counselor Ayanone, on that point.
On that point, did we not do $12 million over, from two to 20 years?
No, at this point, it shows as a one expenditure, but again, when we do the capital budget, that's when you really, this is really just a proposed vision for it. You'll be able to decide to increase it, decrease it, or spread it out as you see fit.
Okay, thank you.
The next slide talks about debt outstanding, what our current debt is, and it's just a follow-up to the first one, and again, it doesn't show there, but we were at approximately a $10 million, and because of the issues we just talked about, we're approximately $32 million of current outstanding debt. Again, if we decide to accept all of the items that were in the capital budget, we would go as high as $62 million. So again, that's a decision that council will have that opportunity to deal with shortly. When you look at the debt, we've talked often about how much debt we can afford, and you will talk in a few minutes about various financial policies that will really guide us going forward. The blue line at the top is the recommended max that we or any municipality would be allowed to go to for debt, based on the 25 percent of revenues. The 15 percent, the yellow line, is really what the council has determined would be an acceptable max, or maybe not acceptable, but a max anyway. And what you've got here, the red line, is where we're at. So we're quite below the 15 percent, even with that projected additional debt. The green line is really based on information we've got from BMA and other sources, is more the average. So you can see, we have traditionally been below the average, and with the recent additions of the facilities and investments, we're now above the average. So just gives you an idea, we're within the range of what some would say is acceptable. What unfortunately doesn't show up on this chart is ability to pay, because you can deal with averages in terms of how we compared other communities, but each community's a little different relative to income and willingness and ability for residents to pay. This is a lot of numbers up here, but it's just a bit of a breakdown of the taxation and the revenue sources, and it's kind of interesting because it gives you an idea what changes we're looking at going forward. The very top line on taxation, urban and rural services, of course, the budget we have at this stage in this current draft, there's no suggested increase on the levy. That will be up to us to respond to council's direction on it, but it shows a $524,000 increase, and that's our estimate right now of the new assessment. So it doesn't show any increase, of course, because we will not have any increase on assessment this year. The other significant point on this page is the third line from the bottom, the transfer refers from reserves and reserve funds. There's a reduction here of over $2 million. And again, there's a slide I'll show in a minute relative to, over the last many years, in order to keep the levy down, we've often gone into reserves, which is probably quite appropriate to do that. Our concern has always been that we've become too dependent on the reserves, and if we don't replenish them, eventually, we're going to hit the wall, and there'll be no money to go there. And then you're looking at a significant increase. And, you know, we reduce here at 2.3 million, and just to compare the number at the front, we were 1.4 million, and we need 3.5 percent to come up with the 1.4 million. So this is, it's a huge impact, and something we're hoping the council will be quite tuned into as we look at developing some of the financial policies relative to reserves. The next slide actually touches on reserves again, and the purpose of this slide is just to give you an idea how we've utilized the reserves and what our trend and reliance has been with reserves. And if you go back to '03, '04, you know, we've been in the 6 percent, approximately the 6 percent of our budget, we've actually depended upon from reserves. We dropped down in '05, back up in '06, so it's been up and down, up and down, and it really depends on how much money we have. But the reality is, I mean, in a perfect world, we wouldn't use reserves at all for this purpose, not to stabilize the levy rate, but we'd use it for special one-time items, because now it's sort of built into our system, and if suddenly we don't have reserves, and we don't have other sources of revenue, then you're going to have to go to the taxpayer to make up the difference. And it's not a very stable source for us long-term. The next is just to give you an idea, the breakdown relative to our assessment and where the assessment comes from. And obviously, the largest assessment is in the residential, and it'll give you an idea of the changes from year to year. So it gives you an idea of where we collect the revenue from, but, and it shows you where the growth is. And you can see a large growth relative to the information we have in the residential. But also, it's interesting to point out, while there's so much talk about industry, we have growth here as well in the area of industrial as well. So there is some change and some movement, and we have had, as you know, some different businesses that have been coming to our business park, and we're optimistic that others who we're currently negotiating with through our business development office, that we're getting some good response on that. Anyway, that's the big picture, and we wanted to just share that with you to give you a flavor of what we have right now. The plan over the next couple of weeks will be, we're going to come in and we'll be doing individual presentations with the various operating departments. You'll get a chance to really talk about what the priorities are in each of those departments, and of course, you'll have detailed numbers to decide what you like and what you don't like, recognizing that as of today, we need approximately 3.5 percent or $1.4 million. So we either collect that $1.4 million from the taxpayer, or some part of that, or we find another source of revenue, or we cut expenses. And as you can see, based on the expenses, we have very little increase, even though we've absorbed utility costs and we've absorbed the labor, which is a significant part of any city operation. So, Mr. Chair, let's...
Can I do some questions around the table? I'll start with Mayor Salsi.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to acknowledge staff's efforts in reducing the, actually, the deficit amount to 3.5 percent. Not that long ago, we were talking, I think, somewhere around 9 percent. Is that correct, Mr. McDonald?
That's correct.
And I realize that that can be done just with a movement of the pen, and I look at transfers to capital, and I think, members of council, we've got to be considerate of the fact that there may be some projects in jeopardy. And I think until we have that full picture in terms of the capital costs, and you heard some of the members of council ask that question about what does this mean to various projects, whether it be the Drummond, or sorry, the Dorchester Road overpass, or downtown, or the such. So I would like to maybe have that consideration when we get to capital expenditures, and I'm not sure if there's going to be a significant impact at this point. Maybe Mr. McDonald can give us just a preemptive of the comments that you might want to make with regard to capital. Have there been projects that you've had to sacrifice that we have on the books that we plan to do next year?
Chair, we've delayed some of the projects, but each year, council obviously focuses in on their priorities, and you're going to have to kind of do the same thing again. The issue here is that we've reduced the contribution of capital by about $2 million, and so the only way we can continue to maintain that same level of spending is if you decide to debenture them. And, you know, that would be the decision that is... So it is possible that would be the result that we would reduce or delay, reduce the number of projects or delay and push them forward. So that's always the balance.
And, Mr. Chair, then, subsequent to that, we have seen just recently, our Director of Public Works indicate almost a million, I guess, $100 million in spending requirements for water, wastewater, and roads, and of course, we've got to come to fine-tune our commitment to how we approach those required improvements. If I asked through you, Mr. Chair, to our CIO, if we brought this figure down to 3 percent, I'm sorry, to 0 from 3.5 percent, what impact would you suggest it would have in terms of where we'd find extra dollars?
That was a question I was hoping I could ask you, in terms of where you'd like me to go to find the 3.5 percent. So I'd rather not, you know, answer that at this point. We've come in and we're preparing right now the broad draft budget that shows very little increase in our expenditure side of things. Obviously, if we go to expenditure sides, you know, we're looking at cutting services, and clearly, the staff will take the direction of council, but we were, you know, we're not ready to put that card on the table yet. We're hoping that you will give us some direction in that regard.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would certainly agree with our CIO. We're not looking to cut services, obviously. We'd like to provide as much as we can and working with less. And what I'm saying to you is, I believe that probably keeping up to the rate of inflation is sustainable and is responsible, but at the same time, I'd like to see what impact we might have on our capital projects that may be coming up for discussion in the next couple of weeks in our deliberation. So I think that while staff should be acknowledged for their effort in bringing this down to 3.5, I'd like to see the full impact when we get to capital expenditures.
Okay, thank you. I do have some other questions around the table. I'd like to ask a question first, if I can, I guess, of Mr. Burden, and I'd like to say first of all, that, Mr. McDonald, I think your comments are quite appropriate about council actually taking money from reserves. I think that it has been done for a few years now, but in my opinion, I believe that we need to stop the practice. Mr. Burden, can you tell us at all what our reserves and our reserve funds are at at this point right now?
Through the chair, our current special-purpose reserve balance is approximately 9.3 million.
And if we take almost $3 million out of it, then we'll be left with just over $6 million.
Through the chair, that would be correct.
And if I add up all the reserves that we have here, I believe I come up with a figure of about $18 million since 2003. So the council has taken $18 million out since 2003 of reserves?
That is correct.
Okay. I'd just like to say on that point that I personally believe that it's time for us to start reversing that action and putting money back in instead of taking money out every year. I do have some other comments around the table, though. I have Counselor Thompson on that point. Counselor Carrio, please.
On that point, Mr. Chairman, I was thinking the same thing exactly. I think we should come up with a policy with some council and staff input. We need, well, we need this here, and we're not sticking to it, obviously. We need a better policy, and we need to agree on it, and we need to get our reserves back up.
We do have, we do have the policies, like the financial policy report on the agenda for later on, and just going through some numbers with Mr. Burden on it, for instance, the tax and rate stabilization reserve, it talks about council setting a policy that would have 5 to 10 percent of the actual gross expenditures in a reserve account. Gross expenditures for our tax rate are $82 million, so that would mean that we would need 4.1 to 8.2 million in a reserve fund at any given time. Our rates for our water, our gross expenditures, are 31 million, so that would mean that we would need anywhere from 1.55 to 3.1 million in a reserve account for that. So we are going to be dealing later on with policies that I guess would give staff some good guidelines to follow. Just on that point, though, I have Mayor Salsi, and then I have Counselor Thompson next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To that point, I was just going to suggest that the report F. 2007-12 on financial policies gives us a clear guideline, and I think it's something that we obviously should consider very seriously. So to the point that Alvin Carrio made, we'll be able to deal with that issue as soon as that policy, if and when it's adopted.
Okay. Have Counselor Thompson, please.
Thank you through you to the CIO. I've really enjoyed my input into the big picture so far. Zero, none. When are we going to get down to having some serious discussions about the detail on the budget?
I think, Mr. Chair, as I mentioned, in two weeks.
And you have a schedule on here, but how in-depth are we going to get into the budget discussions? You know, 3.5, in my opinion, is still out of line. I still think that there are people that are having difficulty coming to grips with the sewer and water rates that were approved, and I think we've got a long way to go before we can suggest we've got a 3.5 percent increase.
Chair, I agree 100 percent, and in terms of how detailed you want to get into, it would totally, your call. Our plan is to provide a fair bit of detail when we begin with the individual departments, and we'll seek the direction of council. The final call, of course, is council staff is just providing this to give you a sense of where we're at as we get ready to come with the details.
Do you not think that we could have had some input? Do you not think that we could have had some input into the budget discussions up to this point?
If you have input, we'll welcome that, but at this point, we've had a couple of corporate services meetings, and, you know, like I said, we're open to that. Staff doesn't reject any kind of input, so.
Well, I think maybe we have to have more meetings. We don't meet every other Monday, so a good budget discussion in between, I think, would give us the opportunity to have some input into the detail in this budget because it is comprehensive. What do we, we've got all kinds of areas where, in my opinion, I think we can look for economies in the budget. So we're going to be dealing with a, with a staff changes and a report from Mercer later on. I'll save my comments till later, but $80,000, I think that it was done by the Human Resources Committee and yourself several years ago. When I look at what we ended up with, we got the people already here, I think that could have been handled in-house. You know, there's all kinds of it. What are we spending for outside solicitors? What are we spending on overtime? All of these things are important issues that help us come to grips with this, you know, 3.5% in my opinion is unacceptable at this point. As far as the reserves are concerned, I'm glad you brought that up. What were the reserves in 2003, Mr. Burden, through you, Mr. Chair?
Through the chair, I'm sorry. I don't have that figured handy. We'll certainly provide it as.
Take a stab at it.
So 24 million?
27 million?
The special purpose reserves have ranged as high as 12 and 1/2 million to a low of 7 and 1/2 million over that course of time. When you work in reserve funds, some discretionary and some obligatory, then you're including values that would take you up to 27 to 30 million.
And what do we add now?
Special purpose reserves are at 9.3. Reserves, funds, discretionary, and obligatory, I'm not up to date on that. I'll have to get back to you on that one.
While I just echo, Mr. Carrillo, and your comments about the reserves, we're in a dangerous situation, and we have all kinds of projects that everybody's optimistic about, but maybe we can't afford.
Yeah, okay. I don't believe we're in a dangerous situation yet, but I think if we continue on the road, we could be. I have Counselor Iannoni that wishes to speak, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just asked Mr. Burden, when are we getting our budget binders, which I guess is the time for us to start looking at numbers. But I don't remember anybody around this council table agreeing to 0%. And, you know, I've heard people say to me out there, you can't do anything with 0%. And for the projects that we've mentioned, are these still in the budget, is that still in the budget? Those were important things, and those are all based on infrastructure there, all based on needs that the residents gave us. Nobody's saying tax people to death, but you have to raise revenue some way. And I'm quite frankly, not convinced on a 0% budget. I've never voted for a 0% budget, and here we argue I've never voted for a budget. But there's never been a budget in. I voted for 3, so. But they all had increases because the residents are saying to us, sustain our services and give us more. You can't give more with less. I don't know a household or a business who can do it. There has never been a 0% around this council table, ever. I don't want to get into an infilling debate, or where you funneled money to and from, but there was never, ever a 0% increase around this council table.
Can I get, do I have any other counselors that wish to give comment on the presentation?
I have to respond to that.
Go ahead.
I'm sure that there'd be a lot of people out there who, if we said we were coming in with a balanced budget 0, would be extremely happy in light of all of the other utilities and everything that is going up. And if you look at the, from '92 to 2003, and look at the total budget increases and the budgets that we brought in, most of them were 0.
Counselor Iannoni, please.
I'm going to bring in everybody, my 2002 newsletter from staff that shows you didn't raise taxes, but you took it from the sewer surcharge and you moved it over. So I don't care where you end, then you targeted the sewer surcharge, and you did it with the garbage fees. And I'll bring in all the information that everybody screamed about here when I ran my first newsletter. That would never happen. I don't care where you get it from the residents, whether you call it a tax or you call it an infilling, you still took it from the residents, and there's only one taxpayer. But I'll make sure everybody gets my newsletter again.
Do I have any other comments to the big picture presentation? Counselor Thompson?
I would, I would, I would like to have a copy of the newsletter, and I wonder how valid a newsletter is from a council member?
Okay.
I'll go through staff.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, we'll move on to the next report, which is F-2017-11, dealing with the 2007 budget schedule. Council has the budget schedule in front of them. They can approve it if they wish, looking for a motion to approve the schedule.
The schedule is?
Yes.
Motion by Mayor Salsi. Seconded by Counselor Maves. Any questions or comments to the schedule?
The budget schedule? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2007-12, dealing with the financial policies. These are guidelines that council will be giving staff to basically manage the finances. Any counselor have any questions or comments to the policies as reported, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Burden, did you want to give comment first? No? Okay, Mayor Salsi then, please.
Well, thank you again, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to address the financial policies recommendation that corporate services adopt this report, and I think it's a very responsible approach. And we've had, over the past year, BMA Management Consulting engaged in an in-depth analysis of our city's financial matters and indicators, and I think it's fair that we, John, we tried to look at, to see how we compared other municipalities, but also the fact that we set some definite policies, the fact that we're into some policy statements with regard to reserves, monitoring reporting as well is an issue, obviously, looking at stabilization of reserves as well, and looking at just, just normal debt management policies. I think that we haven't had the benefit of anything like this in the past. And I refer to page seven, where we look at different things that should be done in respect of a number of concerns we've all expressed around this table over the last several years. And we're looking at user fees probably being the most contentious issue. And when we had the representation from Mr. Wood says with regard to BMA, his comments were that, you know, we have a number of adequate facilities, but we're charging different people for different reasons in terms of, if you look at slow pitch diamonds and things like that, where the taxpayer is paying for an abundance of slow pitch facilities to be maintained. And really, we should attribute the cost to certain, certain tournaments and things that utilize those, those facilities. So I think that we have to pay some regards to the recommendations, especially with regard to revenues and looking for new sources of revenues. And I think that this will really crystallize the approach that the city should take in terms of developing strategic plans and dealing with fiscal matters. So I am very, very excited about this. I'd like to move the recommendation, if I may.
Okay, move the recommendation. I, do I have a second or to that?
Is there really a recommendation? Looking for direction?
For the consideration? Sure. Mr. Burden, could you give us some clarification on what you're seeking here?
Yes, over the last year, we've had the expertise of BMA consulting, and this document is largely their work in reviewing the financial aspect of the city of Niagara Falls. We intended this document to be a discussion document, to open dialogue, and essentially that. This is just for the consideration of the Corporate Services Committee. We know that next week, that you're actually having another meeting on strategic matters, and perhaps this document could be a part of that discussion as well.
Mayor Salsi on that point.
So I'll amend my motion that we have regard then to the recommendation with respect to the policies contained in the report.
Okay. Secondary, Counselor Iannoni. Do I have any questions or comments? Counselor Carrillo, please, then Counselor Thompson, and we.
I'll put a second motion.
Counselor Thompson, please.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the comprehensive report, and I know this basically came out of the Mercer recommendations, all encompassing suggestions with respect to fiscal management, but I have numerous questions regarding the report. But if we're going to do that, have a discussion on this during the budget later on, we can talk about that. The one thing I would like to ask, Mr. through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Dulevik, regarding the sewer and water rates and Mr. the letter that council referred to you a few weeks ago from Mr. Veloski, regarding the, says specifically here, brought up to my attention, that the cost of recovery of water shall be by the size of a meter. That was one of his concerns that created some inequities with respect to how water bills are paid. He's saying, and that's number three on page eight at the top, it should deal strictly with consumption. At, is that discussion or report or meeting being set up or coming through?
Through the chair, staff have met, and we talked about the need to relook at how we are charging for water and wastewater. I think the bottom line is, you know, we need so much money, and it's how do you divvy up who pays for what? And as it's been a number of years since we've done a study where we involve the public, staff are looking at proceeding with another study this year to look at our, how we are charging the residents out there for, I think, for implementation in 2008. But we'll be coming back to this council with what are the proposals and what are the impacts to the various users by adjusting how fees are collected from the users.
Well, I was hoping that you were going to have a meeting with Mr. Veloski and respond to his concerns because how the overall cost is divvied up is exactly what his concern is. He's trying to make sure that the little guy pays the least amount and according to consumption. So hopefully, we can set up a meeting with him to answer some of his concerns, and in fact, he's a very bright guy and an engineer and may come up with some suggestions because, you know, 12 municipalities, you probably have 12 municipalities that do this in a different way. And I think that some of his suggestions have merit, particularly when it comes to water meter size and how it affects the little guy.
Through the chair, that information will be taken into account. I've met with Mr. Veloski in the past to talk about these issues, but we'll definitely, when it comes time, we'll be soliciting input from others out there, and we'll take into account Mr. Veloski's concerns that he raised and look how we can address them.
Are you going to meet with him?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I have Counselor Wing, please.
Thank you. I think this is probably one of the most important documents that we're going to have across our desks this term. I was really excited when I saw the general financial policies and the asset management policies and the reserve policies, too. I think this really sets us on the road to fiscal responsibility and ensuring our long-term financial sustainability. I'm just wondering, though, with regards to setting up all these reserves, I realize we're going to try and phase them in, but what kind of short-term tax implications are we looking at? I realize this is going to make us a lot, set us a lot sounder footing in the long term, but in the short term, as we're building up the reserves, what kind of impacts are we looking at? Through you, Mr. Burden, perhaps?
Sure, yeah.
Through the chair, we're just starting this kind of analysis, and we really wanted to get your first reaction to these kinds of statements. And hearing the positive reaction now, I think we can do some further financial analysis, come back with perhaps a four-year horizon of how each year could build on itself with respect to short-term and long-term, what we could expect.
Okay, that helps a little bit. I'm just, I'm really happy to see the general financial policy statements and the asset management policy statements. I think those are excellent and longer to do.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other questions or comments about the report? Okay, we have a recommendation on the floor that we give regard to the policies that are included in the report, and that the policies be included in our next strategic planning session. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried, thank you. Next item on the agenda is our organizational review implementation, and once again, I'll hand the floor over to Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just summarize quickly. You have the report, and I know we've had several meetings and discussed the implications of this report. What I'll just go through quickly is the cover report and highlight some of the recommendations. You recall that back in the spring, in May of '06, actually, council directed staff to prepare terms of reference to look at an organizational review. Mercer was the company that was selected, and it was really to look at administrative structure and process at the senior management level, to look at realignment, to make sure we were being as effective as we could be, or looking at structures that might help us be more effective. Several recommendations were made. I should point out, first of all, that part of the terms of reference was dealing with transit, and we've already dealt with that issue. And there was another issue related to a competitive review, a sour review, which we're going to be bringing back in April. So this is really just dealing with the structural changes that Mercer suggested. And to highlight, he suggested basically that we fill the two executive director positions that are currently vacant, one due to calculated issues. He suggested we introduce a third executive director level, and you can see it on your chart, so we'd end up focusing on planning community services and corporate services. We made reference to the transit which we've dealt with, and that we would put transit as part of our transportation division under the Director of Transportation. He suggested that we should look at creating a new position to focus on communications for various reasons. He also suggested that we also look at another new position that would be in HR, that would really focus on learning and development, and he felt that that would be helpful relative to the changes in HR direction generally. And he also, they're the key areas, the executive director position, the HR position, and the communications position. There were other issues that he addressed relative to the fact that we had some one-on-one reporting relationships, manager to manager kind of thing, and he talked about some administrative structures relative to committee structures and meetings and so on, which we dealt with. He also talked about the need to do some work on developing value and operating values and operating principles that would really become part of the fabric of the city and how we move forward, and we are dealing with that. We've dealt with this, of course, because there's some personnel issues involved in committee as a whole in February, on February 19th, and again, on February 26th, we had an extensive discussion on it. The result of those discussions were that, in essence, that the council, we would not be going forward with the executive director of planning, but instead, we would look, we'd look at that at another time possibly, but we would not create a structure with three, we'd create a structure with two, as we've had before. And specifically, we talked about how we would make those moves, and I'll reference the finance part of it in a minute. But basically, we would fill the two executive director positions with staff internally, and we would reposition some of the other staff, and specifically, and it's mentioned in the report, Ed Dulevik would become the executive director of community services, and Jeff Holman would move and become the manager, current manager, and become the director of infrastructure services. So there are several new director positions created as we break down the structure of it. In the area of corporate services, Ken Burden would become the acting director of corporate services, and Todd Harrison would become the acting director of finance because there's a vacancy there, as I mentioned, due to illness. In the absence of hiring a communications person, because council also said, while they appreciate the need to focus on communication, that wasn't appropriate at this point to hire a communications person, so we're taking some of that portfolio and adding it with the manager of strategic and corporate initiatives, Dale Morton. The, so those are the key moves that would take place. The cost to deal with these changes, and maybe the point that Counselor Thompson was referring to, if we made all the moves, there's obviously additional costs because of filling positions. However, we talked about ways that we could do it without incurring costs, and there are several points mentioned on page three. One is that we've now offered a voluntary exit option for people who are eligible to collect owner's pension, an unredeemed pension that's currently there now. Other savings are available as a result of repositioning people within the corporation, and also phasing in some of the positions as well. There were some funds available. The bottom line is, with the recommendations that are here, this, these changes would provide a real opportunity for succession planning, it provides opportunity for people to grow in certain jobs and other promotional opportunities. In terms of a cost, the cost actually will be a net savings to the corporation based on the strategy that we're looking at. And while I haven't indicated a specific number, I can tell you now, because we are getting some feedback regarding some of these details, I can't term up the number, but we're looking at between $150,000 and $250,000 annually that will be saved as a result of these changes. So, Mr. Chair, that's basically the report. So, Mr. Chair, that's basically the report. And all the details in the chart are attached to the council information.
Okay, I do have a couple of people that have some questions. I'll start with councillor Ayenoni.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To you, to Mr. McDonald. Mr. McDonald, for those that take the buyout package or whatever the retirement package, I hope that we were putting in, or I'll make a motion to put in a policy, that for those that retire, we do not immediately hire them back as consultants. Because we've done that for numerous positions I won't highlight here. But the city of Toronto has a bylaw that states if you retire from your municipality, you cannot be rehired back as a consultant for a minimum of two years. So I hope there's nobody been offered a buyout and then a hiring back as a consultant. Because if that's not double dipping from the same page, I don't know what is.
Sir, I think they're going to St. Catherine's, actually. Actually, we have no policy in that regard, but if council is wishing, we can certainly address that and look at the Toronto issues.
Councillor Ayenoni.
Are we looking at doing that? Are we...
No, we have no plans whatsoever.
To hire anybody back immediately?
Exactly. As we talked about this, this is a very narrow grouping. It affects very few people. And, you know, it's our hope, basically, in essence, it would reduce our overall management component by several people. But there was no intent and certainly no discussion about doing what Mr. Ayenoni suggested.
Okay, thank you. I have councillor Fisher, please.
Thank you, councillor Turenthal. On page two, and you have referred to the positions with names. I'm having difficulty with that. The positions are one thing, but the names attached, I have a problem with. Names to be removed until I can see their credentials or qualification. I don't know if they qualify for these positions. And please, don't tell me that they do, because recently you have said people who have left did not qualify. Well, if they've been here three years or six years or 10 years, how do you know whether they qualify or not? Now we're changing their job description and you're saying they qualify. I don't know that.
Okay, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Normally, we never name names in reports like this. And the only reason we have is because council has dealt with this twice in camera and basically authorized these moves to take place. And while councillor Fisher, I understand your comment, but I can tell you clearly, these people are very qualified.
But I don't know that.
Well, I'm telling you, they are and you can accept that or not.
But I don't know if I need to believe what you're telling me. I would like to see their credentials.
You can, Mr. Chair, councillor can believe what she wishes, but I'm telling you that these people are extremely qualified for these positions.
Sir, I remember a few years ago, when you got your job, you didn't have all your qualifications. We sent you away to school to get your qualifications. So can you please tell me how they qualify?
Mr. Chair, I'm not going into this. If Aldwin Fisher wants to, when camera, look at their resumes and qualifications, but this is quite inappropriate. And I think Aldwin Fisher knows that these people are extremely qualified.
I'm not really criticizing him, but I'd like to see their credentials.
Yeah, I think councillor Fisher, that we have to take Mr. McDonald's word for now. I think if you want to talk to him later about what their credentials are, you can do so. If you'd like to make a motion of counsel, then you can see where council rests with it.
Remove the names.
Well, the names are out in public right now.
I'm not going to remove the names. And the actual, the ability to do this, the cost savings, were based on having qualified people to make these moves internally. And as people are moving into certain positions, other positions were not being filled. And this is a staff report and I stand as it is and I have no intention to remove the names.
Okay, do I have any other comments from any councillors? Councillor Thompson, please.
Yes, from the amount of movement we have here, and I endorse the people who have been elevated into the new positions. However, I think that this could have been done in-house very easily. We know the people. There's been very little change. If you take out the communications officer, that was $90,000. I don't think there's an awful lot difference. My only concern... McDonald, let me get a chance. My only concern is you said that there's going to be $150,000 to $200,000 savings. What, you obviously do these things because you're coming in with another report that compares the new positions with other positions throughout the fall and to elsewhere. Do you have an estimate of what the increase is going to be with the new report and how it affects this organizational chart?
Mr. Chair, we haven't looked at that. I can just, two things on that. Number one, the competitive review we're referring to is a report that council would look at, even if this never happened. And I think it's happened in the past where the council's directed staff to do it to ensure that we are paying competitively. In terms of the implications on these positions, my guess is it would be minimal and it's totally to the discretion of council. It's certainly not a mandatory issue, but it would be a minimal impact if you decide to take it at all.
You have the report, is it ready yet?
I have the draft report and basically, as I had mentioned, actually in camera, the competitive review showed that we're basically very competitive, except at the very senior level, there are some discrepancies. But overall cost, when you look at our labor budget, it's minimal.
And in comparison with the $150,000 savings, we're well with it?
Comfortable. We're very comfortable with that.
I'd also like to adjust the fact that council did go outside for the organizational review. I think that there's no question that we would have the knowledge to do our own review in-house, but I think whenever we do it in-house, then we're consistently criticized that we don't give unbiased judgment towards the organizational review. So I don't know if you'd like to adjust that, Mr. McDonald?
That's exactly why the council directed us to do that. And so we simply followed the direction of council. I don't disagree with councillor Thompson's point, but the fact is council wanted to outside and that's what we did.
We needed an unbiased opinion. Are there any other comments to the organizational review? Seeing none, I'm looking for a recommendation to approve the report by councillor Ayenoni, seconded by Mayor Salsi. All those in favor? Opposed? Councillor Fisher is opposed. Do we have any new business for committee? Councillor Wayne?
Yes. At our last meeting, we passed proposed changes to the water billing processes and one of the things was that the supply of water for a tenanted water account may be shut off when the tenant fails to provide or to continue to provide the required deposit info. When did that take effect? Has it taken effect? Did it take effect that evening?
No, I'll answer that. No, it hasn't taken effect yet because we are in the process of achieving the bylaw. We have to be with our leasing department and our engineering department because it's a clean-up procedure in the bylaw and the wording of it to allow us to do that. So it hasn't taken place. What we've done is we've operated as normal as we have been doing.
Okay, because I got an email today which said, it's from a landlord, he says, "I received notice on Friday that a tenant of mine is in arrears with their water bill, which is in their name, not mine, and the outstanding balance will be placed on my city taxes. I gave the treasurer's department a letter a few years ago stating that if the tenants fell behind in their water bill, the city is to turn off the water prior to placing the money owing on my taxes. The gas company, Bell Hydro Cable, don't take this kind of action. Why does the city water department do it? Why can't the water department notify the landlord the moment a tenant falls behind in their water bill?" Are we...
That letter signifies why we came with the report two weeks ago of the changes that we needed to deal with in our bylaw. Unfortunately, the bylaw to change the process wasn't in, we needed to change the wording to allow ourselves to do that. All of those issues are going to be addressed as such. The fact that he provided a letter to us previously, we were not able to shut the water off.
Okay, so what happens to the cases like this while we're in limbo between having passed a motion directing staff to do something and actually getting the bylaw, putting the change in effect? And we treat this case in the spirit of the motion passed two weeks ago?
Until the bylaw is changed, we would not be able to treat it in the spirit of it. The municipal act is clear that we are allowed to use the process that's in place. We addressed it and brought forth the changes that we proposed and we will have to look through the language of our bylaw to make sure that we can do that in a manner that's reasonable. And that will be coming up within the next two council meetings.
Okay, is it possible to get an next council meeting? I think, you know, with cases like this arising, we really need to get this change written into stone as soon as we possibly can.
Unfortunately, the staff that have been dealing with that, we're not able to meet in the last week or since the time of the last meeting. We will be meeting, scheduled to meet this move on it. I don't believe that the time would allow us to get to the April 2nd meeting, but we certainly will do every effort to meet as soon as we can.
Okay, because this is a really sad situation here. You know, you've got a tenant who has a water bill in their name, falling behind on payment and the landlord's going to get dinged and it's not even his water bill. I just, I don't know, unfair situations this bothered me.
I think as well, councillor Wayne, part of the recommendation from two weeks ago was the fact that city staff are going to have an open house and invite landlords to city hall to review the policy changes that staff is proposing that council accept. So until we actually have that meeting and we know that landlords are, I guess, in agreement with the policies that we'll be moving forward with, we won't really be able to move forward with the policies. So I guess we'll have to have the meeting first. Do I have any other comments from councillors? Okay, seeing none, we're adjourned.